You get the first city. They're like that for good.
We get work there.
That's true. And they don't want to start talking about certain stuff. I mean, I thought you mentioned.
Yes.
That's the way. It's.
What matter is it to them?
It's what you're doing.
What about that? Really loving you.
You got enough time to think the same.
It's my.
He. Says. Once again. The law.
She.
Just you ask questions. Well, yes. So you.
If they can hear how.
I think that's. Okay. You need all that. Yeah, so I'm. Play that. What else?
I don't think we're facing. My.
Yes. It was right. Underfit. I was. But I did. I just got off. I'm not. It's. Good for. You're the man you care about. So I was. I heard myself. I'm those. It's. Here's the. Stuck. You stay.
It does. So. It's. I do.
It's not very dear to. I feel sorry. So I pray.
My. And this is like. There's. He would.
You have to. Have to look at.
Oh.
Yeah. I'm asking. If you might tell about it. It says.
Oh, yeah.
You guys. The. Yeah. And I. Maybe there's. So I'll go like here. Sleeping. It's. It's that. Close.
Smile on both.
All the big. Oh.
It's. Set up. Just something. This is. This is. So. I think. So.
I used to. Send us. On. I just. I read. It's. You know, part of important. Yeah. Most. The words.
Oh.
The question is boring. Better. That I got an attribute.
That's great.
It kind of. I don't know. I'll show. Actually. There's certainly. People want. I think. There's something. So I would like to do that. But. So you give it a high street. Or else it's in the. For. You. Are. Please. Part of. Bad. Was. His. Girl.
Well, I think. They're. They're. I should. There's pretty much like. I don't. I have a cat. We. Because I'm. Turned. I.
Phillies. Battles.
Is it? I'm sorry. It's. So.
They. Sure. It's mission.
I'm sure. It's.
Reminding. So.
Are we, uh? Have we talked?
No.
All right. Ready?
Good.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, I'd like to call into action the. Five. May. Ninth. Two thousand twenty-four zoning commission meeting.
Wait. Um.
With. Fledgelysance, of course. Fledgelysance.
To. Five. Twenty nine. To. Forty. Just. Thanks. For. My. Show. Under. The. Just. For. Just. Just.
Okay, case number one. Z twenty-four day zero zero eight. Twenty-one eighty Venus Street.
The three point two acre site consists of one parcel of belt with the warehouse associated office space in the L and limited manufacturing district. We put. L and limited manufacturing district will allow for less injection of manufacturing on this reason. For this site, we are apparently found in limited manufacturing district. Soundproof site has been looking at development and the pay-on framework. Other parts of the city. We see. Bring. These are the sites they want to facilitate. Backing. The street. Less of the site than the content of store facility. We can be back. Compendium of C twenty-four thousand three. File can reduce. How towards for setbacks that contribute. That's the one that you have as well. And then the meeting. The study is within the ten five degrees of the trade progress area of the machine which right now is important. The second day is at this location. The site is located in the boundaries of our assigned area of the station. The recommendation is for approval. But the efficient tax. Excuse me. Very simple. It's up in the middle of the standard that it has site access, landscaping, screening, no one. The requested L and limited manufacturing range will allow less injection will be. I think. Six. Users. For most of the system, then we'd be transportation. They trade from. From. The. Freezing. Distinction. On. The text. Company. Only. Do. We. Have. Of. Any. Therefore, we. Don't try to date. The. For.
Okay, any questions? Okay, Dan Traffic Issues here?
No traffic issues.
Chris?
Uh. No additional comments. Thank you.
Kathy, are you thrilled?
We're thrilled.
Okay. Okay, any comments or questions? Is anyone to speak regarding case number one? Venus Street? Nobody's here. In love. Bless you. Jeff? For yours?
I'm Jeffrey L. Brown, attorney for the applicant. We've worked with staff in the area commission to present a proposal that is consistent with the area plan recommendation and the area commission's. I think. Happy to answer any questions.
There be none. I need a motion to take a vote.
Motion to take a vote?
Second.
Okay, uh. And now I need a motion to, uh. All right, I guess we need to call a roll. We already have the text. We could call a roll.
Denise Kishy Changlin? Amanda Gold?
Yes.
John Ingerson?
Yes.
Ian Luque?
Yes.
David Carey?
Yes.
Sheriff Fitzpatrick?
Yes. You are approved.
Thank you.
Yes.
Case number two. Z twenty-three day zero sixty-three. Fifty-one hundred forty Cos Gray Road.
Supplemental packages, you'll find updated overall site plan, updated landscape plans, enlargement plans, various sub areas. Updated CPD plan, updated limitation text, correspondence between the applicant and the running farm staff. Had four letters of opposition with the obtained photos. The approximately two hundred and sixty-five acre site consists of eight parcels of developed agricultural uses in the P U D planned unit development district. And the L I limited institutional district. This request will rezone the site to the L A R twelve limited apartment residential district. L I limited institutional district and C P D market plan development districts. The application allows for all in uses within the requested L A R twelve district. Subareas one and six or eleven will allow these base uses. Subareas two A and two B will allow for detached single unit dwellings on platted lots. Subareas three A, three B and three C will allow multi-unit residential development. And subareas four A and four B will allow townhouse users, townhouse units. And subarea five will allow, um, single unit detached, single unit dwelling without platted lots. The L I district allows limited institutional uses with supplemental development standards addressing landscaping, buffering and stormwater retention. The CPD district allows C four and C five uses with supplemental development standards addressing building and parking setbacks, traffic access and circulation. With code modifications provided to building setbacks, dumpster placement and maneuver. To the north of the site are single unit dwellings and farmland in Washington Township in the city of Dublin. To the south is a electric substation, single unit dwellings and farmland in Brown Township. To the east are single unit dwellings in the N G neighborhood general district and farmland in the city of Dublin. To the west is farmland in Washington and Brown Townships and in Madison County. Current council variants have been filed and included variants for subarea five of the L A R twelve permanent single unit dwellings without platted lots. Variants are for district centers, subareas two A, two B and. To the A R area district requirements for subareas three A, three B and three C, fronting townhouses in the subareas four A and four P. And building ninety percent areas three A, three B, three C, four A and four B. Are included with this request. The request will be heard by city council and is not considered by this development committee. Site is located within the boundaries of the interim Hayden Run border plan which recommends neighborhood general, uh, excuse me, neighborhood center, general and edge park and closer development plans. Additionally, the site is subject to early adoption of Columbus City Land Plan policies and guidelines. Site is located within the boundaries of the Hayden Run West Civic Association whose recommendation is for approval. The L A R twelve limitation text comes through site plan and includes development standards addressing density, site access, landscaping, building design and graphics provisions. City department's recommendation is currently for disapproval. The requested L A R twelve limited apartment residential district will allow multi-unit residential development. The requested L I limited institutional district will allow mid support uses, stormwater facilities. And the requested CPD commercial plant development district will allow for limited commercial development. All corresponds with the submitted site plans. Zoning staff reviewed the limitation text dated March twenty-fifth and set revisions and comments to the applicant that have yet to be addressed. Zoning staff will require a revised limitation text addressing commitments to the satisfaction of all review agencies along with site plan and existing. The following are outstanding items from city staff. Um, comments from city agencies have been updated since the first version of the staff report was sent out prior to May third. The following are only those items left outstanding. So for the division of planning. Remains in support of the use and density but continues to request revisions consistent with plan and citywide, uh, of course, citywide planning policy and design guidelines, citing the following. Staff requested commitment that townhouse units in subarea four B that abut the existing multi-use path for heritage trail. They face and address the trail, however, alternative, uh, layouts to be considered. Staff requested commitment that future buildings in subareas three A, three B, three C and subarea five. Will face and address public streets and that parking and circulation will not be relocated between principal buildings and public streets. Recreation and parks has the following comments left outstanding. Staff requested commitment that the eastern portion of the tract of private open space label Green River M. Having used and placed on it for stream quarter protections and preservation of maintenance. Or that an area approximately to the eastern half of Green Reserve M dedicated as public parkland and then stormwater outfall from the. Uh, or the with the recreation of. So I request commitment that preservation of the existing tree stand in tract label Park Subarea Three be coordinated with the Parks Department. Staff requests the tract label Park Subarea Four be reduced to accommodate future multi-use path connections to the Heritage Trail. Staff requests deeding of public parkland in accordance with the public, uh, parkland dedication ordinance requirements at the time of initial planning. Staff requests that future street trees are geolocated and data provided to recreational park staff. And finally, staff requests that landscaping and buffer commitments within the limitation text, um, on the submitted landscape plan reference city Columbus tree technical manual guidelines with regard to spacing. That text states trees will be placed on the center. Division of, uh, traffic management has the following comments left outstanding. Uh, the traffic impact study is under review and additional revisions or commitments may be necessary based on the final version of the traffic impact study. Upon completion of the above comments, satisfaction of zoning, planning, recreation, parks and public service departments, recommendation will be fulfilled.
Recommendation is what?
The current recommendation is for disapproval.
Okay. Uh. What, what is the overall? Density count? Number?
Uh, number of units is approximately two thousand fifty.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah. Or the. Speaker? Okay, Dan Traffic.
Sorry, Phil, meant to say the, the traffic impact study, uh, we, we actually returned comments a couple of weeks ago. The applicant is, uh, working on resubmitting a revised study. Uh, but ultimately, uh, only the commitments, um, of the final study are incorporated into the text. Uh, most notably, the developer will have responsibility toward offsite improvements of intersection of Cos Gray and Rings Road. Um, and then also they'll need the framework for establishing the, um, installation of a traffic signal at the site access point to Cos Gray Road.
Cos Gray and Ring, did you say?
Uh, at the, uh, the site that, the offside is Cos Gray and Rings and then the traffic signal would be at the, uh, proposed access to Cos Gray.
Okay. Are there any other sticky issues that are? Be a problem? As you look forward?
I mean, those, those are the major ones. You know, there, there may be some minor items with twenty-four pages of text. Uh. And, yeah, there is, uh, some. Uh, language in there for, you know, potential, um, offsite connectivity that has been discussed, um, which, you know, I'd be having a few questions about that.
Yeah, we may have to come back to it after we hear some statements. And you, you know, the, oh, the, the blank. Blank check. Speech.
Well, actually, I have listed all of the comments. Well, my name is Rebecca Ma with Plank Law Firm with an office address four eleven East Town Street, Columbus, Ohio, four, three, two, one, five. I do believe we have met every item that was listed in the, um, staff denial points. For person with, I have them all. I'll go through each with you. And, and the only issue maybe with, um, potentially not meeting all of the C two, P two planning principle guidelines for the townhome units is. There was a comment from planning that I can talk about, um, in previous comments, because this has been over a year of submissions and discussions. That I think we took care of that comment. And then two, there's another issue related to C two, P two, related to the townhomes only. That the neighborhood group appreciated the townhome styles we're going with, whereas planning maybe didn't like certain aspects of, of a couple of those prototypes. So I'll go through that. Um, but we made a compromise in the text. And we also still include them in our portfolio since we think there's a market for it. But I'll go ahead and pass out if I could.
Not just yet. I just wanted. When, when we get back to the traffic.
Okay.
Suck up back to it.
Okay.
You.
Do you want me to go through the points?
Not, not yet.
Okay.
We'll get to that very quickly.
Okay.
But you, you are looking at a, a, an action taken tonight by vote. That is conditioned on you making your way through the traffic negotiations.
Yes, sir.
And agreeing to comply with whatever they dream up.
Absolutely, um. We submitted the original traffic impact study at the same time of application filings, which were back in October of two thousand twenty-three. There's been a tremendous amount of comments and revisions back and forth. Our own traffic study has conclusions and warrants in it relative to traffic signals and turn lanes and diverging papers. Cos Gray Road, Rings Road, we know about the signal. So, um, our last set of comments back from the city were April twenty-third of two thousand twenty-four. Those are in a letter and there's red lines. Our next study, which will be submitted next week, we've already stated by email, we, we have agreement with those items.
Okay.
I just think anything's outstanding.
No, I just.
Okay.
I have to say that to everybody because. Not yet a, a closed move. Okay, uh. We'll talk a little bit about traffic. Is there something else you want to add about traffic?
Not this time.
Okay, Chris?
So. As noted, planning is in support of the uses and density proposed. We do have the outstanding item with regards to townhomes that are backing up the heritage trail. Requested that they front towards the heritage trail or otherwise provide, you know, alternative site plan or just buffering, screening thereof. You appreciate the additional connections, uh, to adjacent sites that have been provided along the way. As well as the one that could potentially connect the southwest, um, to an annexation that's proposed for that area. Uh. That we need clarification on the CPD site plan, the CPD area, as well as, um, just the multifamily areas to confirm that no parking and circulation would be between the building facades and the primary right of ways. Uh, there is text to that effect to some extent for the multifamily that talks about parking not being allowed, but circulation is not mentioned there. So we just want to clarify that and make sure that we're on the same page. Same with the CPD. It's, uh, it's really dealing with the setbacks, doesn't, uh, really talk about the, uh, parking and circulation between the facade and the right of way. So for that area, we're looking for the building, the front, one of those streets, uh, that it.
Okay.
And it has a corner on. And then additionally, with the single family rental area where the, the plat, you know, the platted lots are not shown. We want the same sort of thing, which is that the buildings are fronting towards the public right of way in addition to the private right of way, right of ways that are mentioned in the text. As well as not backing up to the open space, uh, shown to the, consistent with our, you know, guide.
Okay, and I noticed on the, on the drawings that you get M, K, S, K.
Mm-hmm.
Site work.
Yes, sir.
They do a pretty good job of matching graphically what you've set down in text.
So hopefully that balances out.
And recreation and parks.
Thank you. Uh, we're really trying to try and get some clarity around some of the documents, but we still have a few pieces of information that are a bit unclear. Um, and maybe Rebecca, you can help me out just a little bit. Um. In the development text, since we've had some information flying back pretty quickly. We're trying to be really careful. We've got those current information. And I've got three different sizes for the tract. So I'm not sure what the acreages overall. Um, and we've got the most recent May one, we've got three plans that are dated May one for the Western, um, site plan. And one of them has, the most recent one has two thousand twenty-two units and we've got development text at two thousand fifty. So just want to make sure that we've got some idea because, um, that really does affect how we can go ahead and make sure that we have a good understanding of what that P D O requirement is going to be for that parkland.
Absolutely.
So it's kind of important that we're not only looking at protecting and conserving the natural resources. We're not impacting that stormwater freeway. We're making sure that we've got public space carved out for the community because we've got a tremendous amount of people coming to this area. We also want to make sure that, um. What we put in text now is something that we can have staff pick up in the multi-phases that it takes to finish. And so, I mean, I think you know that, but I just want to clarify that the reason we're being careful is because we know this isn't going to happen all the time. And we don't want people to get confused. Right now, we're a little confused.
I can clear up the confusion.
All right, that's, uh, let me ask. Is anyone here in the audience wishing to speak? One, two. I can't see behind that door. Is there anyone else? Okay, just two speakers?
There was a third.
Third, okay. We, we operate by the same rules of city council, three speakers, three minutes each. Okay. Try not to be redundant because once we've heard it, we don't need to hear it again. And, uh. We will give you your opportunity to speak. And then we'll bring the applicant back unless you want to add something right now, have the time.
May I?
If you wish to, you are on.
Okay. This acreage tract is a total of two hundred sixty-five acres, which is at the top of your zoning text. And it's also on the overall site, um, acreage list in the table of the, the, the site plan. However, we call that in a defined term, overall site. Then you have a portion of the property that we define property. Property is a portion of some of the parcels that are going to be zoned L A R twelve. So that is not the full two hundred sixty-five acres as the text and the, the plan indicate. That would be the two, two hundred and fifty-six point fifty-nine acres. Then you have an L I portion up on the north part of the property on Rings Road. That is a limited institutional district for a fire and police station for the city of Columbus. That is again a separate text and it's at the end of your bigger package. It has a separate set of regulations and commitments. So that is a separate zoning application as well. And then we have a separate zoning text for the CPD. The CPD is the pink portion, three point nine eight acres over there by Cos Gray Road's intersection with our main corridor running east and west through the site. So that again is, um, a separate CPD text. So that's why there's a distinction in the acreages that are noted. Um, yes, we are very sensitive preserving woodlands and the Hayden Run Stream Corridor. We have throughout this entire process from the first text going forward, have always had commitments in our texts for easements. To be granted either to the county or the city. We removed the county as a named party. Now it's just the city for stream corridor protection and preservation and control. Whether that is in, um, subarea M, which is a light green subarea near Cos Gray with the pond. That used to actually be a public park, but parks and reps didn't want ponds in the public spaces, the public park spaces. So we moved that park to a private reserve instead of public. However, we will still grant easements in that area to the city that will be publicly maintained by the corridor for the stream to be sensitive to that and have hiking trails, multipurpose trails, whatever the city wants to do. And then all of the dark, um, public park land, that is dedicated parkland. So we have, um, twenty-seven acres that were required for public dedication. I think we're one acre short. Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's twenty-four acres of public parkland dedication requirement. We're like one acre short because of the transfer very recently of some of the part, public park space to private. In addition, do you see the little east-west arm of light green property running out to, um, Cos Gray? We also showed that as a dark green public park. The city doesn't want that strip, so we made that private. However, our total open space common area, private reserves, public parkland is fifty, about fifty-five acres total, which is almost double what a park, public parkland and open space P D O requires under chapter thirty-three eighteen. So again, we're, we're double. Um, we show a lot of connectivity and roadways. All of those James Way and James Boulevard roads are going to be public right of ways and dedicated to the city as public right of ways. There will be ten-foot multipurpose path on one side, um, five-foot sidewalk on the other side with tree lawns. We have all of the landscaping and tree lawn commitments in the text for that. We also show a ten-foot multipurpose trail connection through that turquoise strip to the southwest corner of the bigger property. That is a connection of the multipurpose trail to the existing heritage trail bike path and horse trail. Now, we also have a note right there at that little turquoise color that says. If the city or any third party in the future wants to build a right of way road connection there, either under Heritage Trail, um, or above it with a bridge, that that can be permitted. So we've dedicated that land and took it out of the public parkland for the city or others to do that work in the future. So we're happy, um, to, you know, explain that we have been working very, very hard adding connectivity, a lot of road stubs. You'll notice there's a road stub in various parts of the development to vacant tracks that we don't control. That is to help with future connectivity, future development. You can see an east-west running through the peach color of, uh, subarea three A and three B, going through the single family of two A. You can also see a stub in subarea five, going north and south, a large right of way, that'll be a public road. That will get us to Hayden Run Road one day. There's only one parcel, one tract of land between this site and Hayden Run Road. So that's a really good connector for the future. You can see the light pink, uh, Rings Road and Cos Gray Road right of way dedications that we agree with. So we show those. And just to give you an overview of the, um, density and the housing types. So every, um, light peach color of a subarea, those are single family platted lots, single family subdivisions, two A and two B. And we have a density listed on the site plan, which is kind of like a proposed number at this early, early preliminary stage without final plating and final engineering. Whereas it's pretty routine in the text to give yourself a little bit of flexibility for the actual standards. So every subarea might have a little bump up in the number of units per subarea, which is all fine. The text would control in that instance, but this is pretty much what may be built and maybe the text, you know, won't be used, that little bit of flexibility. So what we did is maybe add five units per subarea, uh, so to speak, in the text, which again allows some flexibility in the future when we get to engineering. So the light, or I'm sorry, the bright orange, those are all multi-family residential subareas. Those would be on private streets. And yes, we agree with planning. Our text is going to have those multi-family buildings oriented towards the public right of way. So we have that noted already in the text. We also have commitments related to landscaping connections between private roads and public roads. All that is in the text. Subarea three A and three B can share a community center, a pool and amenities for those residents if it's the same builder. And by the way, there's going to be a master developer H O A, a master development H O A in declaration. And then there's going to be sub, um, declarations for restrictions in all of this development. Um, the master developer will need to put in the infrastructure, the major James Way, James Boulevard, ten-foot multipurpose path sidewalks, tree lawns along those public right of ways. And we'll need to deal with stormwater and all of that, like fencing, signing, entrance features, lighting, that, that sort of thing. And then each subarea could be, um, sold to a developer, a different developer or builder, or could be sold to, you know, a few. Um, but again, every subarea could have its own mini declaration with restrictions and. Um, but again, every sub area could have its own mini declaration with restrictions and commitments that only apply to that sub area, which is all very normal part of this kind of size of development. In the brown area, the Sub Area 5, that is a single family units or duplex units that will not have platted lots. They will be for rent, a brand new product. So that is not something that the zoning code in the Columbus jurisdiction has a definition for. So we created that definition and it's in the council variance application, this definition about having those single family units or detached duplex units on a larger tract of land, not platted lots. So they're, they're, you rent those. And those will be managed by a first class management company, Coastal Ridge Stillwell Product, and I have their brochures. Um, again, we have the town home areas. Those are the bright yellow, 4A and 4B. Those town home units would be, we propose those to be fee simple owned, platted lots units. So they're attached units using the town home standards of your zoning code. And we leave all those standards of the code except one height. We're asking for a little bit of a bump on the height from 35 feet to 40. I think it was 42 or 45. I'll have to check. But um, with that height variance, we are going again to meet every other zoning default standard of a town homes development, which is tough to do. Town homes have two and a half parking spaces per unit, which is not the same as a multifamily residential, which would need only one and a half per unit. In addition, town homes have an extra open space requirement. We meet all of that. We meet the side yard standards, the lot standards, all of that. Um, let's see, we have another 3C orange pod above Sub Area 5. That is another, another multifamily. And then C P D again, the commercial, that could be a daycare, it could be a gas station, convenience store, that could be a restaurant. Maybe two or three different tenants there or developers. And we have all of these great amenities, connections, the Heritage Trail as an amenity for all of these residents and guests with, and then again, connectivity, all this diverse housing type for all of these consumers in this housing crisis that is much needed. So that was just an overview. I would like to address some specifics and I would like to hand this out. This is a little bit.
That's all for you. Sorry, I can unlock that. Each membership gets the town hall.
Okay. So yeah. Thank you. And just so I can address the two comments planning just made too, because I can address those very fast. Um, we did look very seriously at the town homes that fade or run along Heritage Trail. There's only one row of town homes there that kind of run along Heritage Trail and it's on this big zoomed in plan. If you, I don't have this in your packets. Um, we're showing here the existing trees along Heritage Trail and the amount of buffer. There's 65 feet of a landscaped buffer. Those trees are existing from Heritage Trail to those town homes. We, um, this is the proposal. So just supplement the landscaping, have a large buffer, a landscape buffer separating the town homes from Heritage Trail. But we can't do an alley loaded product here, right? Or change the whole product type to an alley load and, and have units front Heritage Trail with the alley rear entry for a car. Um, we don't have many developers and builders in central Ohio that are building a town home product like that anymore. So this was the best we can do relative to the row of town homes along Heritage Trail. I just wanted to point out that we did pay attention and we came up with this zoomed in illustration of that area. Um, I'm happy to have planning take a look at that. And then also Danny said this and we listened to this and we did, we did make an adjustment, but I noticed your C P D plan in front of you is the wrong one. But I'm going to talk about the right one because the city should have the right one. Okay. So we're looking at the city's plan. Yes, they have the right one. So we did listen to planning. They asked us to, wait, I, I can't see that very well. Yeah. We, we put the building setback at six feet along the right of ways, the public right of ways. And the parking is behind the building setback. So basically we're saying to the city planning department, yes, the building should be closer to the front edge of one of those public right of ways or both. And also the parking should be to the rear. We also added language in the C P D text for architecture because planning asked us to pay attention to that a little more. So we added some basic like architectural higher quality standards for the facades that would face a right of way. So you'll see that we added some elements of architecture standards, some materials, um, bump ins, bump outs, variations, interesting features for those front facades. So we, we think we've taken care of the comments that were just noted by planning. Please let me know if that's not the case. Um, I heard the Rex and Parks comments. Um, we are definitely paying attention to conserving the, the sensitive areas of Hayden Run Corridor and the streams. We know where they are. Uh, the tree stand up in Sub Area, there's a, yeah, that dark sub area up there near Rings Road. I think it's, is that number four? No, that's number three. It's about seven acres. That's a current tree stand. Um, that's going to be a public area. So we also agreed and I added it to the text that we would help the city maintain and detain collected stormwater. Rexon Park asked for that. So we've added that in the text and you'll see that. Um, again, we are adding easements to the city for any stream corridor protection areas and sensitive areas. That's in Sub Area M because that's private. We've moved all the ponds to the private areas as you note. So we will own those, manage those, control those by our HOAs. Let's see. So Sub Area 4, those were the town homes. We took care of the comment relative to the town home areas that Parks mentioned, but I don't remember what that was. Maybe, maybe Kathy can remind me. And with the P D O, we're, we're still happy to work with Parks and Reps. If we are off a little bit on the acreage for the park calculation, we were really careful with it. It's down there at the bottom of the table. It goes through multifamily. What units are considered multifamily? What units are considered single family? Then it has the extra town home open space requirement, even though town homes is also part of single family because those are planted fee simple lots. We've calculated the, um, numbers of open space and parkland required for every sub area. We think we got it, but we're happy to adjust it if it's needing some tweaking. And, um, let's see. We also have landscape plans. Landscape plans are attached to your overall site plan. It's a six page site plan with landscape plans. Tree lawns, the, the size of the trees, the type of the trees, the light standards, all of which match City of Columbus light standards and specifications. We also will deal with our own stormwater management that retain that. We have E P Fares or Civil Engineer, all of which has been studied. Um, I think that was it for those preliminary comments. And what I've passed out, if I could go through it, just what I passed out. There is a large text, again, that's the L A R 12 for 256 acres for housing, all residential types. And that will include some of the common areas. Then we have a text in there for the L I, fire station, police station. The City of Columbus is really excited about that. And then we have the C P D at the end. In addition, you're going to see a council variance, even though the variance is not a part of development commission purview. We're giving you a courtesy copy of the very few variances, this project of the side, size needs. Like we have a detached garage height variance for the Sub Area 5 garages. They're supposed to be 15 feet maximum. We have asked for a 19 feet. Um, 19 or 20, I believe it is. And then also there is some density variances. Um, I know again, you're not addressing these issues tonight with this body, but density variance is only for the apartment, the 3A, 3V, 3C. The rest of these sub areas are under the 12.1 units per acre, many of them by a lot. And yes, our total overall housing count is 2050 under the text and 2022 under the plan. And I explained why there's a difference. There's also a, um, a lot standard variance for the single family. Instead of those maybe being 50, we, we could have 40, 40 foot minimum, um, lot, lot building line area. And we also have an area or square footage variance for the single unit lots in 2A and 2B. Okay. So, um, we also went through Hayden Run West Civic Association. And I'm really happy to report they invited Columbus neighbors and City of Dublin neighbors. And so they invited way more than our buffer report, right? But we had a zoning committee meeting, which was a two hour wonderful meeting and lots of great questions, lots of feedback and, um, things were addressed. And then that was moved on to the commission, a full commission for the Hayden Run West Civic Association. We held another like two hour meeting. It was really great. Had a lot of questions, comments, addressed those. We have also worked with Franklin County on this project. City of Hilliard through the City of Columbus Traffic Division, City of Dublin with their traffic engineering and planning, and also City of Columbus, every single department. I believe we've addressed the City of Columbus concerns and issues that have been raised this evening. Let me know if there's anything outstanding, but we have unanimous support from the neighborhood group. And also I brought the buffer report of the neighbors that were invited, of course, under the standard of City of Columbus neighbors buffer report and mailing labels that the city would have notified. Um, but I also have in your packages, your plastics. Those are all of the sample preliminary renderings and elevations for the various sub areas. So when you see a sticky note for 2A and 2B, those are single family prototypes. When you see the 3A, 3B, 3Cs, those are multifamily residential apartment type buildings, three story buildings typically. Then you're going to see the town home products. There's quite a bit of variety of the town homes. But I don't have any that face the rear or alley loaded. They're all front loaded. They're beautiful. And then we have, um, also Sub Area 5 is that new product, Coastal Ridge with their Stillwell brochure, and they're going to be doing that more and more and more. So we're really excited. We've worked really, really hard. We have been very detailed. Um, we've been writing this text for a long time. It's gone from 50 pages to 24. So there's been a lot of thought, a lot of planning, a lot of responsible detail to all of it. And we're very proud of the project. Really excited to see it come to fruition and it's been wonderful. All the departments working together collaboratively, lots of meetings in person and on phone calls. So again, we're excited. Um, we'd love to keep working on just some tweaking items because that's where we think we are. But we definitely would like to hear a recommendation of your support tonight.
Uh, two questions. The vote at the commission?
Yes.
Five zero.
Right. Yes, unanimous.
Okay.
Both times, zoning committee and full commission.
In your estimation, how long period do you think? You're talking about the absorption of the whole place?
Yeah. Well, this engineering preliminary site compliance plan, final site compliance plan, plating process is going to probably take an I V P Fares here, they're experts at that, but I would say six to eight months. Six to eight months for that process. After that, once building permits are in hand and there is some economic incentive T I F issues to deal with too. We have an attorney working on that because this property used to be owned by Dominion Homes and has a memorandum of understanding already with the City of Columbus for this to be developed in such a way that you see, because it was zone P U D six back in 2000 and I think it was four. So that memo is old and needs updated, but there is a T I F that was always meant to happen for this property to reimburse the developer for public infrastructure costs. So the master developer will put in those main corridors, all the public right of way infrastructure, all of that. So there will be a master construction happening for that. I would say they could start, um, 10 months from now if all goes well. And then it will be a phasing in of how many developers, builders are getting involved and how quickly they can sell the sub area. So two years, maybe before you start seeing some housing or actual construction of buildings to get all that infrastructure in.
Like to ask, uh, one of the E P Fers guys are hiding behind. One quick question. Uh, question is very simple. You have a tributary area of stormwater that
Yes, sir.
encounters your property in acreage of 265 acres, but also picks up some flow off-site existing conditions.
Yes, sir.
And that is your planning directive in terms of coming up with stormwater management as an engineering? So you've got a quantity of water and a time?
Yes, sir. There's the existing ditch. There's a currently a plan with Franklin County. Um, has some jurisdiction over that ditch currently and they're doing some improvements. So we've already talked to them and had their plans to coordinate with that. But there are certainly some drain tiles and issues like that and old farm land like this that will encounter. Um, but those are covered by the, uh, the Stormwater Manual for the City of Columbus. And we'll be abiding by that throughout the process. We are aware of already some off-site areas that will be flowing through the site.
And as far as my experience goes, one of the first things that happens when you go out there and get all that open land is you dig a a structure that will become a pond to, to a certain level and a certain width. And then you'll contour the rest of the land accordingly. And that begins to, to be the first utility that takes place before anybody builds a house or pretty much just before anybody actually puts even, any better road. Okay. All right. I just want to lay the playing field flat there. Okay. Uh, we may have a question for you later, but uh, Rebecca, let's bring the three speakers up and hear what they have to say and then we'll bring you back to the table.
Yes.
First. These microphones are directional, so try to speak right. Thank you. Give us your name and your.
My name is Steve Armstrong.
You pull that over closer to you.
Steve Armstrong. I live at 6958 Hayden Run Road. By I think the 48ers south of the dark gray area there that, uh, is directly abiding this property. I own the only developed property, property on Hayden Run. Uh, to the east of me is it's, uh, is the creek and to the west of me is the substation.
Okay.
Uh, I don't. I don't, uh, oppose this. I just had two questions to traffic.
Okay.
Uh, item three. Bullets one and two. Item three, bullet one and two. Uh, right of way dedication of 60 feet from center line along Cosgrove Road, 60 feet from the center line along Cosgrove Road, a total of 88 through the site to accommodate Cosgrove Rings Connector between Rings Road and Cosgrove Road. I don't. I haven't heard anybody talk about that tonight. Maybe it's because I can't hear. And maybe it's because you have a very soft voice. But that's my first question. A total of 80 feet through the site to accommodate an extension of Hooger Road between Hayden Run Road and Rings Road is required per C C C 4309.17. You don't have to reply to that right now. The, the second point, the proposed site represented in the material associated with this application would appear to be incompatible with the thoroughfare plan alignments identified by the Columbus multimodal uh, thoroughfare plan. Uh, review prior to this needs to happen.
This is regarding the connectivity?
Yeah, the connectivity. I don't see a good connector from north to south. I see just from the, I, I see traffic dumping onto Rings Road, which is currently two lane. And, uh, a very, very small road doesn't handle traffic at well, very well at all. Uh, and then they, they also dumps out on Cosgrove. So that's, that's my, that's my question.
Okay.
You're going to have 2,000 units. Let's say 4,000 cars. If it goes to and from work every day, that's, that's 8,000 trips a day. Uh, that's my only, that's my only statement.
Well, I, I heard the Rings Road connection mentioned earlier.
I didn't hear that. I didn't hear that.
Yeah. That's, that's one of the concerns that Rebecca mentioned, that they're, they're working out. So she's going to go negotiate with the traffic department and bring a blank check and make a donation for traffic lanes. So that's yet to come. We can't put our finger on that detail.
Well, I'm just wondering about the road. I'm not concerned with the site layout. I'm not concerned with anything else. It's just, it's, I've, I've been watching this for 25 years. I always thought there was going to be a north-south connector. I don't see it here. So I don't know how that's going to work.
All right. We'll pursue that. Let's have the next speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Very clear.
I can use my mouse again.
Give us your name for the record.
My name is John Hedrick. Oh, which, how can we do the, show on the map?
What do you need for?
Well, right there where the big pond is.
Yeah.
I was going to show where my property is. My name is John Hedrick. I live at 5055 Cos Gray Road.
This, this one down here?
No, yeah, they go out towards the road, south of that pond, right there is where I live.
Okay, right on the corner there.
Yeah. I have many issues with this project. Number one is the congestion, which is already heavy now. The, the amount of units that's going to be built in there, and especially the molar units. Right now I have a problem with water drainage, which from that property across the street, which was originally what she said was Dominion's first phase, and that was, this is supposed to be the second phase. Their water over there all runs into the pond beside me, which is, they purchased and built that pond. And everything has to run into that Hayden Run watershed, which was built by Army Corps of Engineers back when it was all farming. Well, now you've got all this concrete runoff from waters all rapidly right in there. And just from that development alone, across the street floods my property every time it rains. My whole back half of my property gets flooded from that pond, overflowing.
You may be better off after they build, you are now, because they are going to, they are forced to take into their calculations what's happening to you now and channel it to.
So are they going to dig that wider and deeper all the way down to Hayden Run? Because I've lived out there for years, and it floods all the way down.
It may be an underground piping that goes, that leads to a bomb. It's an engineering sequence.
If it doesn't happen, then what? So now my property floods even more? Because that creek gets overwhelmed every time it rains from all the development.
It will happen where they won't get a building. I mean, it is the first permit they need. That's what I mentioned earlier. Very first thing you'll see on any property anymore is all the heavy equipment that contours the site to account for draining the site. Because you can't even start to put footings in for one of these apartments.
Property across the street floods my property. Didn't do that before they built that. Well, because all their, all their water now runs into my backyard.
Whatever happens, if, if, if you're abutting their site, they are going to be responsible for picking up whatever the current condition is for water. They have something that's famously called the Q calculation, the quantity calculation. And they must do it and prove it before anybody gets a building permit to do anything else.
Well, how do you know how much water is going to run into that creek? Because all their, their whole site's bound to run into that creek. That's the only exit of waterway out down to the river.
These guys go to the 19th decimal point and they're, and they're forced to come up with a proof. And it boils down to this world-famous Q calculation as a formula. And they have to achieve that. And they usually do better than that because nobody can predict exactly what's going to happen, how big somebody's patio is going to be, and they all add up. You've got a good form.
You know, and I moved out of this property to get away from all this stuff, and now it's all coming out here. And it was zone, single-family, which I was okay with. But now they want to build four or five sort apartments all over the place? And they had 2,000 people in there in an area that's congested with two-lane highways right now?
I know, I know. If you live in Lincoln County, it's even worse.
So that's, I mean, I'm going to suppose the traffic, the extra crime it's going to bring in, the more trash, because all that trash from that development comes over my yard, and I have to dig, get all that cleaned out.
Is there, is there somebody with the city engineering that you could?
Oh, I've dealt with the city many times.
So you can keep in touch with?
I'm township. Try to get the city to come out there and do anything. It's about nil to none.
Well, I think the city's, county city engineer is probably in county.
How many times have I called the city on that pond next to me from that development across the street? They don't even acknowledge it's their pond.
Well, this is, this is a famous part of the city of Columbus because it's a finger of land that comes in between Hilliard and Dublin and Washington Town.
And so is the property across the street. So is the property across the street. I get no results from them.
Well, I think they're catching up with it. This is a big enough piece of property.
I've been there 15 years and I've done, I've called the city probably, I can count a hundred times or more, and it got nothing done.
Well.
And if I tell the township, which is who I am, they can't do anything because it's not their property. It's the city property.
Which is true, but they are in business to take care of these kinds of conditions. And they're, they're all, they all have their computers and they all have the same mind.
I haven't seen it so before, given that years I've been there.
We'll take care of it.
So I'm opposed to all the congestion of populations going in.
Okay, got you. And we have one more speaker.
Hello. My name's Steve Campbell. And I'm working with an adjacent property owner that's currently going through an annexation process. And there was a comment in the Stafford Board about a right-of-way or could land set aside for a connection off James Way to the southwest. And when I heard Mr. Asher go through outstanding matters, I think it was indicated where it wasn't referred to. And I believe the applicant's attorney spoke to it, but I guess I just want to understand is the city and the applicant in agreement on the language to make sure that there's right-of-way available to connect to the southwest for the purposes of roadway possibly or water or sewer or stormwater?
Yeah, so the current version of the text doesn't have language addressing that that more specifically than what was there before. You know, as you're aware, Metro Parks owns the trail between the site property. And so obviously they'll, they'll have a say in if you think that goes across that property. But we, we did work with the applicant to provide the language to cover so that, you know, if Metro Parks allows, you know, that and the connection from your site does move forward, that that would be accommodated within the zone text and within a plaque for this property. Then also if, you know, for some reason that connection, you know, also does not happen or you choose to develop in a way that does not connect, then the city would have the ability for that land to become part of land.
Is that the turquoise piece of land in the southwest corner there?
That's correct.
Do you understand what?
Yeah. And for the record, we're supportive of our neighbor's development there. And we, it was mentioned about the north-south connector. Obviously, I think one thing we anticipate is in our traffic study looking at that. But we think there's a good possibility that that could be part of the solution for a north-south connector there.
Yeah. And they've already laid out the groundwork, the lead in that direction.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your concern. Okay, let's have the applicant come back.
Thank you. I just have two points really, really pertaining to the traffic. Our last TIS, I just wanted to read through the six recommendations and conclusions of our own traffic impact study. I just think it's important. So we're already committed to this because it's warranted by our development, and we're certainly going to tweak it and work with the traffic division next week and through the final site compliance. But number one was Rings Road and Hootchard Road would, at the James Boulevard intersection, provide a westbound left-turn lane with a total length of 285 feet and an eastbound left-turn lane with a total length of 285 feet and stop control for the northbound site drive approach. Number two, at the Cos Gray and Hayden Run, Hayden Farms Road, James Way intersection, we would have a traffic signal, re-straight the westbound approach and left and through right lanes. Number three, at the Cos Gray Road and Site Drive 3, which Site Drive 3 is in the CPD sub-area, we would install a southbound right-turn lane with a total length of 175 feet and stop control for the eastbound site drive approach. Number four, coordinate with the Franklin County Engineers Office on the future improvement of Cos Gray and Rings Road in proportion with the 14% of site traffic that uses that intersection. Number five, maintain site distance on Rings Road at the James Boulevard in accordance with the exhibit in the appendix of the TIS. It was 189 pages. I wasn't going to print that for you, but maintain site distance on Cos Gray Road at Site Drive 3, which again, that drive is in the CPD area in accordance with the exhibit in the appendix of the TIS. And again, the turquoise area is a .66 acres tract of land. We subtracted it from the public park lands calculation. So that is again, a set aside for any party, whether it's the city or a third party to do a road connection. It could be 80 feet in width over or under Heritage Trail, working with Metro Parks, Parks and Recreation of Columbus. And again, that area is .66. So it's set aside not only on the plan, but in the text. That's all I really have, have. So.
Even now, I say you know, you pretty much covered everything. John? Just one question. So you're going to have different developers take on the production of their products in the sub-areas at the same time?
Possibly, possibly not. Our owner actually is a developer of multifamily residential anyway, and that's his expertise. I believe he would want to retain, if not all, most of the peach or orange sub-areas, 3A, 3B, 3C. So there's potential, we already know the SubArea 5 is already in the works. That's already contracted for. And then we, all we have left then is the 2A, 2B, 4A, 4B. Those are the townhomes and the platted single-family, and we already have Houltie Homes and My Homes, the Central Ohio Builders interested. And they've, you know, and many more. They've sent their brochures and prototypes. And there, there could be a mix of builders within a 2A, 2B sub-area or maybe one builder buys so many lots within it, but there could be a mix. Again, 2A could have its own HOA, different than 2B. Different declaration of restrictions, covenants of record and conditions. But there would be a master declaration for the common infrastructure, common area, stormwater, and the 80 feet right-of-way. So.
So my, I guess my question is really directed to what do you think the number of housing units coming online is in year two, three, four to get to your 2050 or 2070 total?
Well, I do believe SubArea 3A, 3A, 3B, 3C, and 5 would go first. I think portions of 2A and 2B would be going on as well though, simultaneously with even 4A and 4B. Because, here's why. Central Ohio Builders that we're talking to on 2A and 2B also have a townhomes prototype. Many, many more of those brochures and prototypes are in your plastic, but also other builders do that as well. And that is a very marketable hot product because it's a slightly more affordable, diverse housing type from single-family. So there will be a really, real big need and probably a market need for the 4A, 4B to go to really, you know, faster. Wouldn't you think 2A and 2B, single-family, might be slower and then the more multifamily or 4A, 4B would go faster? That's just kind of what I'm thinking from a market standpoint, feasibility standpoint. I don't, I can't say for sure, but it could come at once. It could be in phases.
I think absorption rate is going to dictate.
Okay. And I'm not a financial expert. Yeah. So, thank you.
You have 10% financing. It may go a little slower than 7%, 3%.
Yeah.
That's logical. Any other questions?
I do have a question. First traffic in things satisfying would be smart. He was smart's response to the outstanding items.
You know, traffic, from traffic perspective, you know, obviously until the TIS is finalized, we can't be in support. But you know, conditioned on, yeah, we're working out from the drop-in back study and making sure that, you know, commitments match everything that's written on all the jurisdictions. And then with 24 pages of text, just making sure that, you know, we backcheck all the details for all previous comments that we've had before. So conditioned on that, traffic is satisfying. So planning is supportive with conditions, I think, of finalizing some of the texts within these sub-areas. For instance, in sub-areas 3A, 3B, and 3C, it notes that parking shall not be provided between the front facade of such buildings and the Street B right-of-way or Street A right-of-way. Clarifying that to not just be parking, but also circulation within SubArea B. It notes that principal buildings shall front on private streets. We want to clarify that, that it would also front on private streets, front on the right-of-ways and not back up to the open space that's to the east with the pond. Filing for the CPD, it notes the maneuvering, the maneuvering area for a parking space may occur anywhere on the lot except in the areas where the street right-of-way line and parking setback line. Because of the nature of setbacks, these are minimums. And so potentially you could have a large setback and still have the parking in between the building and the right-of-way, which is what we're trying to avoid consistently with, say, community commercial delay standards. So we just want to clarify that. I think the, you know, revisions to the setbacks, if they were followed to the minimum, they, the buildings would be properly located. However, since there's no maximum, we have concerns there. So we just want to get those plugged up and we will be in support. With regards to the townhomes, the exhibit showing the, the existing landscaping and additional landscaping is, we're satisfied with that. And so that's fine. And the previous comments with regards to the connections to the southwest are also supportive.
Is the nature of these things such that you can get all these eyes dotted, these crossed between now and when this might go forward to City Council?
Yes, we're confident that that's possible.
Okay. I think this layout's got a lot of natural features. It almost made me throw up. It's a nice blend.
It is a nice blend. Just wanted to clarify though, so that there's some clear understanding. There's a tremendous emphasis to make sure that there's public parkland that's current out of there. Some of the green spaces are required by zoning, so they are not PEOL. So that's something that we really need to make sure that there's some understanding about. And that's why I think the applicant's made a good choice, making sure that there's just a little bit different coloration so that we understand that we need people to have open space. But there's the open public parkland aspect. It's kind of an overlay here. We believe we're getting closer on the conversations. We just want to make sure that some of the conversations are very clear. In the timeframe we've been working in most recently, we've all been working very hard to get things updated. But there's a lot of information that crossing back and forth without a real ability to make sure that most information has been back-checked and cross-checked. So we really want to make sure that that's something that's, we commit to and ask for commitment in return.
Well, I think, I think that all, it needs to be buttoned down before this goes to City Council. And if it takes longer than a month, you've got to go at a different speed. But I think you're going to have a lot of issues if it's not tied down as a nice package as a good tool.
And again, we want to make sure that there's a clear expectation on both sides because, as you noted, Rebecca, there's a possibility that a lot of this is going to happen all at once. Typically is a much longer phasing. So having that parkland furbout or at least clarifying before those bases start to be built, some of those, those stormwater lines can even start to impact what is going to eventually become parkland and plating. those stormwater lines can even start to impact what is going to eventually become parkland deflating. We want to make sure that doesn't happen.
Well, and you, Rebecca, you mentioned the HOA. The master plan affects everybody.
Yeah.
Streets affect everybody.
Right.
You can't stick your toe in the water and just do a little bit and let the next guy do his piece. There, those master utilities, the contouring of the property, the underground piping, all those things have to be done as an overall complex that works when it's done, even though you're building it two to five years before you really need all the bells and whistles.
Absolutely.
And I think you're, I think you're way out front on this and you're committed to meeting with the city so you iron out all those documents. So there's no gray areas. You're going to be fine.
Absolutely.
It's impressive that you got through the neighborhood commission five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Yes, sir. My question is one. There's possibility you are going to have that many developers developing the site. And then just pass out this budget. Is this supposed to be a prototype after buy, buy it or just for our consumption?
They are sample and preliminary. They're not committed to as part of the application. However, those are legitimate prototypes of builders we've been talking to who have serious interest. And the Stillwell one, that one's committed to. The one that's subarea five, that bigger brochure, that one's a for sure subarea five developer. But you'll see there's.
I've seen, I've seen these actual buildings all over town.
Uh huh, good, like Jerome Townsend, yeah.
They love work and.
Or trains.
Then my next voice is joining, so I joined the forecast. Are you thrilled with our response?
We're getting there.
But we're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
Okay, partially through.
We're partially through.
Okay.
May I add three more points related to what I heard over here? And I heard on the CPD, we had minimum parkings and minimum building. I'd be happy to talk to planning about converting those to maximums so that it's more like a traditional neighborhood development standards T and D where you put buildings more on the front side of the street edge. So I'd be happy to talk with you about maximums because we understand we're giving you a blank footprint for the CPD because we don't know what's going here and we don't know what users are going here. We need to have some flexibility, but I think we could deal with that. The other part I heard was principal buildings. I wasn't sure which suburb you said B, but I didn't hear three B or four B or two B. Which B were you talking about on the principal buildings?
So.
That was your second comment.
Second comment, that would have been for subarea five. Principal buildings for the detached single unit, detached two unit residential dwellings shall front on private streets. But during our conversation, we discussed, you know, since that area doesn't have the platted lots, like the other single family areas, which do show as fronting on either the open space or on the primary right of ways, not backing up to them. We request, you know, in lieu of the site plan text that speaks to that, where it's the units are fronting towards those right of ways and fronting towards the open space. That, that could include that they have their own private street between, or it could be that they are actually pulling the driveway access directly off of, off of those right of ways.
Yes, we will work with you on suitable language for subarea five for fronting. They certainly would front on the private streets because our, I, well, those units have some detached garages, actually. So we'll talk with you and work with you for sure on language, but they have a lot of detached garages. There are some that have attached garages, so we'll have to work through that. For your circulation comment, no problem. I think I was thinking that parking is also maneuvering, is also circulation. We can, we could definitely deal with that and work with you. And then for Rexon Park, yeah, we will work with you on the public parkland calculation, the P D O, the private open space, but these are pretty, I mean, these are the legally described legal descriptions and pretty specific and finite at this point in terms of the acreages for the green public parks. So we can definitely recalculate if you have an issue with the table on the parkland dedication. We can tweak those numbers and work with you for sure. But I would say the legally described subareas for even the public parks, that is finite and specific at this point. We know what those are. Yeah.
Thing, I just wanted to add to that. The only thing that we just wanted to clarify too was there was some conversation that was left a little bit unclear on what was going to happen in Reserve Al. So we'll, we'll work through the details.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to update the text dated May first, two thousand twenty-four. Sorry, okay, all those in favor? Do we need to also update the site plan?
Well, it's not going to potentially be changing. I actually have a question for you about this vote. Are you conditioning your vote on, yeah, I can be the outstanding comments from zoning, planning, parks, recs, any traffic?
Yes, and that's already, that's already in the E F T.
You can include this site plan if you want, knowing that it may be further updated.
Well, I mean, right now that site plan agrees with the text. And, and I don't want a previous site plan to follow. If it's not dated, we'll date it May first because the text is dated. All those in favor? Okay, I need, I need a motion to take a vote on this.
Motion to vote?
Second.
Okay. Okay, please go off and roll.
Amanda Golden?
I really like the site plan. I feel like we should not have to sit here and listen to you go back and forth with different departments with all these unresolved issues. I feel like there are so many things that we said would be tweaked, would be tweaked, would be tweaked. I feel like it's a very complex and complicated and large project. I'm going to vote yes, but I do not believe that we should be sitting here saying, well, we're going to go on good faith that you're going to meet three different departments' requests after you leave here. I wish it was more buttoned up before I got here. And I'm primarily mostly uneasy with Kathy's comments. That's where I mostly have comments at, but I'm going to vote yes.
Johnny Gerson?
Ditto Amanda's comments are point on point. And it's very complex. And Rebecca did a nice job presenting it. The variations really what could make it, but it could break into, but I vote yes.
Okay, look, buddy.
Yes, I did know what everybody else has said for a very long time because there are so many loose ends in this, in this package.
David Carey?
I'm gonna ask, what will you do to your schedule by postponing this by thirty days to allow you time to actually button up everything all the departments have said and then come back?
Do you feel comfortable that all the conditions specified that we've committed to taking care of, which really I think are very minor in terms of subarea five only relative to private streets running? And CPD site plan, its own standalone site plan, having maximums instead of minimums, very minor. Again, I'll put that in the text too. And Parks and Rec, it's just possibly there's a one or two acre tweak in the calculation for the overall site plan for the public park, P D O dedication. That's pretty minor. And then the traffic study, if you're comfortable, we've been doing it for over a year, I think, with the comments back and forth on that study. We're committed to what it says, it's warrant, you know, that are warranted. And we think we have preliminary approval with traffic about what that warrant is. And it's going to be final submit next week. And we think the emails between our team, traffic engineer and traffic correspond and are consistent with each other. So we think you could feel comfortable tonight on this large two hundred and sixty-five acre project with this site plan, the CPD, the council variance and the, well, not the council variance in the twenty-four page text as just having very minor tweaks to do. But I, that's up to you.
Yes. Are you satisfied with everything she said, yeah, Joe said?
Yeah, we're satisfied with moving forward on the condition that, that we beat all the, all those minor edits prior to council.
Could I ask a related question? I'm sorry. I'm not sure I understand the process here. Who decides whether these items have been resolved? Is it to your satisfaction or is it?
For the planning comments, the planning division is represented by me here, yes.
So if we set a condition of approval conditioned on meeting whatever loose ends are left, it's to you to decide through your department to decide whether that condition has been met?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's been our history that it generally comes up in traffic because there's highway, state highway, regional, local, many folks in the kitchen. And it's oftentimes that at that timing doesn't jive with our time. We don't want to.
I understand. I'm just trying to understand the process.
So that's, that's the basis of the blank check negotiation. They have, they have to agree to do what the consensus says they have to do. Traffic lights, road widening, and they're not in a position to say, well, we're not going to do it. Or they have to circle back and start the whole process over. And they know that.
Okay, let's move on. There's another input, yes.
David Carey?
Echoing others' comments, I vote yes.
Janiski Shankman?
I am reluctantly saying yes. I feel it is unfortunate. I feel the plan is great, but I do not like the loose ends. I, I so I'm going to say yes, but I am reluctantly saying yes.
And Sheriff is better.
And I, I agree, there, there's a, a situation here where we have an obligation to choose whether we believe this is appropriate or not appropriate. And there's a lot of information here that, in my opinion, is appropriate. This is all appropriate uses and it's pretty well detailed. It's a big piece of property and I think it's, it's on the way, it's, it's nearing completion, it's substantially complete. And I don't see much turning it upside down. I think it's important that the neighborhood commission came up with a five to zero unanimous yes vote. And I'm confident that the people involved here are going to carry this thing out. And it's going to be something we can all be proud of in ten years. It's not going to happen overnight. And they may be back saying something changed if we want to tweak this thing. But I will also vote yes, you are approved to go on, but dot all the i's and cross all the t's before I get to city council because there is a tape of this undertaking that it will all fall back on.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
You are approved.
Thank you.
Now, is that it or do we have?
We're reading what you're supposed to make out. Yeah.
Oh, are we ready to go with the next? Yeah, okay, introduce yourselves for the, the fans in the audience. Let's get underway. I think they're going to dance.
Oh, good evening. I'm Justine Palmer. I'm the residential planning manager in building and zoning. And with me tonight, as you know.
Christopher Lor, planning division, planning manager.
And we're pleased to present to you tonight an updating on city's project, the Zone In, in updating in modern, net, modernization of the zoning code.
And stop us at any slide and we can answer any questions along the way. We won't have to wait until the end. For you at the end, just real quick, there's no action to suggest a crash, all.
Thanks, Sam.
We might stand up in chairs.
Well, we expect nothing like.
But her case is we might start the way.
I like the enthusiasm. As many as you know, the goal of the new Zone In project is to create a more effective, equitable and sustainable framework for guiding land use development and growth. And the current project is focused on the major commercial corridors. Just to recap, the current zoning code that we've been dealing with, while there's been small incremental updates to the code, it hasn't been largely updated since the nineteen fifties. The city is growing. We're very excited about that. It's a great time to capture this growth and frame it in the best way possible using new tools and strategies. So we're looking at leveraging an updated code to create more housing opportunities, create a robust corridor for job and business growth. Once again, to create a more equitable city, connect communities and foster good urban design when that development takes place with new infill. Nice. Community engagement today has been very robust and strong. I won't go through all of these points, but you can see here that we've been reaching out to the community to get their initial input in the early stages of the planning for phase one. We've been sending out mailers. We've been going out to the area commissions, talking to community groups around the city. And our public engagements that we're currently in, this is the sixty-page public review of the draft. It's taking place currently right now and most notable is the zoning gallery that many of you have visited. See up close the recommendations provide another way to reach out to the public. The gallery is open six days a week. We've received very good comments about folks enjoying the zoning gallery. Commenting that it's making the code more accessible, they can get their questions answered. So it's probably something we'll be doing in the future. All right. So just to recap, the zoning itself will create a foundation of new code, so text, for these mixed-use districts as well as pair that with an update to the zoning map. So you'll see those zoning districts on the map as well. And in terms of the framework, we're looking at, you know, the general provisions for the code with new definitions, new rules of measurement for those areas. I'm going down to the district, district regulations themselves with supplemental standards. This code, we call it both the twenty twenty-four zoning code as well as title thirty-four. The current zoning code we have is title thirty-three. Both thirty-three and thirty-four will work in tandem while we go through the transition of transitioning everything to title thirty-four. while we go through the transition of transitioning everything to Title 34. The code highlights are, we're creating six new mixed-use districts. We're prioritizing housing. We're elevating people over cars. We're providing clear design standards. Right now, when we have folks come to the city with needing a variance or rezoning, planning division as well as the area commission group will help with that applicant, sometimes in corrective timeline, to come to a design standard for that building facade that works for the community. Well, we're taking those best practices that we've seen and actually codifying those for the district. All right, so here are the six districts. So why do we have six districts? Well, our commercial corridors vary in the urban nature. To the more urban, and then as you move to the farther regions of the city, it's more suburban in nature. So we really needed six districts to be able to fine tune what is appropriate for those areas. So you'll see some districts aren't as heavy on the retail, in the smaller neighborhoods. The more suburban districts will have larger setbacks, really making the development appropriate, but also evolving each of those districts and finding improvements over the current code. Our current code just provides a blanket 1950 standard of suburban development overall. Certainly, we've had the commercial overlays to provide Band-Aids to retrofit that. So with these new mixed-use districts, we've incorporated those commercial overlay standards to make those codified for all districts. All right. And so here's an example of how the districts are set up. We're looking at the amount of building footprint that's allowed, the setbacks, as well as adjacency requirements. And in terms of height, what is allowed? And the new code has further looked at how can height and the neighboring uses transition to each other? So we have adjacency requirements for residential, providing buffers, as well as when you're going up additional stories, there's setback provision to provide a much more natural transition from your two-story, say, districts to your commercial corridor where they are abutting residential. Sorry. And as we mentioned, urban design is a key component of these mixed-use districts. So we're taking the best practices of in terms of massing and facade articulation and codifying it. So we're giving folks choices. Certainly, how they can articulate that building, mask that building. But we're giving them the framework. We're setting the bar a little higher than the code is currently. The code currently has a very low bar. So we are not going to the extent of making it impossible to build the building, but we're giving options to create best practices, to create a commercial corridors that we could all enjoy, and not just when in these instances they needed a variance or a rezoning where we had were able to give input on that design of the building.
And just say, those standards and these standards for frontage types will not apply in the design review areas that are covered in the new Title 34 areas. So the COA, you know, say for Italian Village or Jeremy Village, those will continue to be governing what actually is happening in those areas. The frontage types really are determining or creating, establishing new standards for how the public rideaway, pedestrian interface with the building happens. You can do any of the frontage types. It's not, you know, this district allows this. Really, any of these are allowed, and it just formalizes how those have to happen. Other code elements include definitions that we mentioned for new things like artist work and sales space, defining that so that we can have that use. Site development standards, a lot of those are brought over from our existing overlays and existing standards. For large site standards typically in our more suburban areas, how do we establish a grid for those older shopping centers or malls as they transition into a more urban format? That's all in there. And then rules of measurement with a with images, not just text, that show folks how they how they would measure, say, height or setbacks. For parking, we're going forth with a market-driven parking approach. Fifty-six U.S. cities have eliminated all parking minimums for all uses citywide. In downtown Columbus, we've had no parking requirement for decades. And as we've seen, developers still provide parking that they feel that they need for their particular projects. So for these corridors, we're doing the same sort of thing. In we're currently drafting Public Service and the zoning team are drafting standards, rules and regs for essentially if the parking required or if the parking is deemed to be not enough for that particular site, parking study may be required so that mitigation efforts can be made so that people aren't parking on the side streets and taking up all the on-street parking. So we're we're we've listened to what we've heard from the neighborhoods during our engagement to make sure that there are negative consequences for this kind of approach. So why are we doing that? It's one of the most frequent variance topics that comes through through the BZA and council variance process. It's a major factor in housing affordability, especially for dense projects, dense mixed-use projects. These can be tens of thousands of dollars per parking space. If they're being required by code to provide parking that they don't actually need, that increases the costs of rent and the for sale units. It's also a barrier to reusing many of our older buildings, which were built before cars were required. So we have a great example on Parsons Avenue. The building takes up the entire site. They had to come through the variance process. Even though they don't have parking on site, they can't provide parking on site. It's an older building. We want to be able to reuse our older buildings where possible without requiring a variance. As I noted, no parking minimum in downtown for 20 years. We have plenty of parking. At the same time, we're also investing in transit, the Link Us initiative. Not only invest in transit, but also pedestrian and bicycle systems throughout the city. We believe that providing as many people options of how they get around the city is the is the path forward. As noted, we're going to review the development proposals for those potential parking impacts to make sure that that we're not impacting the neighborhoods. And with the mitigation measures, those can include ride-share zones, ADA parking, residential permit parking, time-restricted parking, et cetera. For as far as land use, these new zoning districts will not require the removal of any existing uses or buildings, unless they are currently illegal. If they're non-conforming or legal now, then they will continue to be allowed moving forward with slight increases in size of their building or use moving forward. Resident for residential uses, we have a wide range of residential types that are allowed in all proposed districts. We have hundreds of existing single-family homes on these corridors, many of which are not allowed by the commercial zoning in place. Single-family homes will be allowed with our with our districts, along with a number of other residential uses. So those will now be allowed. They won't have to come in for council variance when they need a mortgage or they're trying to sell their home. Existing uses not otherwise allowed in the new mixed-use districts will be designated as pre-existing uses. So that's a change from our current code. It does not that does not include uses that are established without permission. These pre-existing uses, as I noted, they can continue to operate, be sold, be rebuilt, and then expand up to 25% in size. If they're voluntarily suspended for 12 months or converted to an unused, then they no longer carry that status. So we started with these key corridors, the main streets of our community. These are the places where improved transit and housing options and jobs should be focused. That's both our existing plans are recommending that and a lot of these initiatives like Link Us. Allows for the efficient use and reuse of our infrastructure and services. And the regional efforts are really focused on these areas. How we determined which areas? We looked at the Link Us corridors. We looked at existing coda routes. The adopted future land use recommendations from our community plans typically recommended mixed use for all these corridors. We had commercial zoning overlays, like urban commercial overlay and community commercial overlays. Those will be going away, but they informed where these districts were put in place. And then the existing zoning, this is typically where commercial zoning is in place, but not always. Additional considerations as we refine that map is how cohesive was the area? One-off areas with commercial zoning as shown by some of these circles, those that were left out. We wanted to be have larger contiguous corridors that made sense for for these districts. We looked at the existing land uses, development capacity. We left out public schools and parks. And then unique properties like condos, which were unlikely to redevelop, we also left out. So the overall corridor analysis, we have over 12,000 parcels, 32 area plans, 1,000 variances existing, dozens of base zoning districts. Eighty percent of the corridors have a 35-foot height limit. That's the same as our neighborhoods. So we believe that these areas can and should have additional height to allow for more capacity. And then residential ground floor is restricted on 80% of the corridors. So you have three three stories allowed. Two, the top two stories could be residential now. In many of the at the lowest level, we'd be allowing four four stories, which is doubling the amount of residential capacity and allowing it on the ground floor for the first time. Some examples here, you know, urban center there and then urban general one. We view urban general one typically as being kind of the stretches between our nodes and primary intersections, whereas the urban center is either the primary intersection or some of our more urban corridors. This is in the Hilltop. For our more suburban areas, the community activity center, again, these are the stretches, a little bit less dense. And then the regional activity centers, these are areas where kind of the large site standards might come into play, where a full-scale redevelopment and grid format with more density could make sense. Currently car-oriented, but moving towards a more pedestrian and transit-oriented. So again, a couple of examples, brewery district and unlock board. So one of the big things that we're really excited about, the existing zoning has capacity for 6,000 more units. With these proposals, we'd be unlocking 88,000 more units of capacity. That's based on analysis by one of our consultants. So that represents more than 40% of the identified regional need. And so bringing that into Columbus, seeing that kind of investment here is is the goal. And that's that's our presentation. Here's our website, columbus.gov/zoningupdate. And we have our phone line and our email line. We're answering questions daily and meeting folks in the in the zoning gallery across the street. So love to take any questions if you have any.
Pretty thorough. I got a couple of questions because I always do. For the corridors like High Street, I guess from what I saw is from is sort of from High Street to the alley behind and not too many areas have a corridor that goes further spread. So is that was kind of the rule?
Generally, it stops at the alley. We but not always. Sometimes when there was commercial zoning that extended further into the neighborhood that's existing and there's commercial activity happening, we sometimes had that go beyond the alley. But generally, if there is an alley, it was it was all in those corridors.
Okay. And the second one is not to what we're speaking about now, but the future changes in the zoning code for that, just for the aspect of housing. When do you think ADU stuff is going to come on? Because that's seems to be kind of a very natural thing for mixed economics, lower-income housing tied into traditionally high-income areas and just a sort of more robust urban fabric?
Yeah, we like to refer to that as phase two of the zoning code update, really looking at the ADU component with the residential districts, but there is no timeframe as yet that we can convey to you. But it's certainly something that's we've seen in the council variances time and time again. Demand is there. So it will be a future project. Just don't have a hard timeframe.
Right. And and I'll note that accessory dwelling units will be allowed on the corridors. So I mentioned that there's the single family is now allowed by right with this proposal. So those folks will be able to pursue an accessory dwelling unit also by right if they choose.
And like, okay, so for sort of like something on Sullivan that's a house that's got no parking or one car parking off the alley, they can add an ADU to that thing and because there's no parking requirement at the corridor, they're okay to do that?
Yeah, if they if they meet the other standards in the in the code, then yes. And, you know, there's the analysis, it's like compliance by our friends in the Department of Public Service determine if there's any mitigation factors needed if they're not providing enough parking. But it's probably a relatively small project if it's just the accessory dwelling unit.
And there's so much infill that happened.
I got one comment only. I'd love the idea that everybody that comes in here isn't going to have a zoning variance request that we aren't allowed to look at and chase by somebody else. And everybody, which is either come to Columbus or go somewhere else. A lot of it has to do with, are they getting jerked around by the process and delayed where they're at risk of losing their financing or breaking their partnerships? Because time is really, really clicking for them. It's hard for me to imagine it was this long ago, but back in the in the mid-'90s, we designed something for the west wall of the city center apartment garage. It was partially retail because it was demanded, but nobody wanted it. Partially office, some apartments, some condos on top. The condos on top are the only thing to save that concept because it wasn't a year-to-year rent. It was a purchase. You'd get your money back right away. In every case, parking was essential. But the guys I was working with weren't up in the right echelon to get that done. So later, Casto and and other people came up with, what do they call that now? City city center?
Columbus Commons.
Columbus Commons. So it was in its embryo stage then. That promoted Mayor Coleman to have a state-of-the-city meeting in the Sudden Theater to announce that he was on a mission to get 10,000 people to come back into the inner city and and sit down and live. And to expedite that, there were three sites where they built parking garages. Because if you look at what's happened in the last 10 years, the White Castle Building has an internal parking garage in and behind it. And there's 25 more just like that. Structured parking spaces cost at least six times more than surface spaces. So taking that money and saying it's a it's a business deal, you're at a big disadvantage if you're not out alone in outer belts where you can park on the bigger land. So Mayor Coleman said, if we're going to build at the city's expense as a lost leader, we can put parking garages that are open anywhere. Once your car, you're going to park and you zip out. Now that you've got the potential to go settle up and go six, seven stories, now all over Columbus, you see six and seven-story buildings. But a lot of them have had to integrate parking in order to satisfy their customer, satisfy people that are going to use the facilities. Because Columbus, Ohio is still the Wild West and nobody can live without. Maybe on a day-to-day basis, you can live without your car. On the weekend, you want to go somewhere, do something. You're not going to let go of that car. You're not going to let go of that car. So I'm I'm interested to see if there's any sort of tributary to this that allows the applicant to match the the goal of density, but have more parking as part of the configuration than you'd like to see in the city would like to see. There's a transitional period where this is going to ramp up. And I wouldn't want a car in New York or Chicago.
But if you want a car in New York, sort of a minimum of about 1,200 a month.
To park it.
To park it. So all of a sudden, you capitalism works.
Yeah, it selects the the survival of the fetus. But I think I think there will be little temporary pinch points as this rolls out where people have this this conflict. Where where the developer meets the code, provides 1.5 spaces per unit and everybody's happy. But the customers aren't happy, they need two cars. Because they got places to go and they got schedules to meet. And they aren't Uber distance, they're they're much more rigid.
To be clear, the the code is proposing no parking minimum. So it's it's market based.
If you choose to put some in.
They could they could put in free parking spaces per unit if they wanted, they could put in 1.5. It's, you know, a lot of it's going to, it allows more flexibility. So if you do have one of those parking garages or a previous development next door, you're like, yeah, we'll lease you spaces. It's not then a city discussion about variances. It's it's a private negotiation to to determine how how to, you know, park.
Right, and you hear it every month, sitting in that chair right over there. Person person up that wants to object, it's about traffic or parking. And it's 90% of the issues, the rest are small. So your answer to questions, it's allowed to voluntarily put some structured parking and they're on the on the way to getting to the point where people get rid of the damn car and take a over and go see you. Go see Avis or or budget.
Oh, I think this is this is great representation and along with I do. And based on what the chairman had just said, had the zoning, the revision we are working on and tying into Coda. And also a good example is short north. Short north is a hard district. Is there any provisional consideration put into resolving the issue that short north doesn't impact any people anymore because people are not going to come from them because of transportation issues and congestion?
Well, each of the quarters, part of choosing them were they're all a part of Coda's link us. So as Coda ran some of their, you know, blessed efforts, that's where, you know, the mixed use districts hopefully take advantage of that. Certainly, feedback, you know, we perceive is that folks are wanting, you know, the transportation improvements now for public transport transit, you know. But, you know, and the additional households that mixed use corridors will encourage, will help build the transit system. So they're going to be, you know, not necessarily moving in tandem, but they both, you know, changes need to take place. And with the shore north that, you know, it's, I don't know, the code is considering bringing back, you know, the circulator for additional public options down there. But that is.
It's a chicken and the egg. Okay, then everybody's a fan of this.
Well, thank you ever much.
Thank you. Good work. Good job. Only two, how many applications next?
One.